Okay, we will start with Mark's budget overview.
All right. I can start here with the 2020 budget. Just kind of want to start off, kind of how the process worked and where we started to eventually map with the mayor and Brian. So basically, the staff was receiving instructions to prepare the 2020 budget and part of this, the recommendation was no additional services, maintain currently we have, additional staff. Part of what they put it, got through, went through committees, put it together. When I sat down with the mayor and Brian, we were $94,000 over the levy limit. So we had to find basically $94,000 cut. At the same time, I mean, I'm getting stuff that we had, transportation aid came in and that came in $24,000 less revenues, we had to add that into it. So all in all, and some other changes, we had some other news that came in where insurance went up a little bit more for property insurance. That was like $930,000. So basically, we had to cut $127,000. So we went through, you know, we did find some corrections and we did kind of went through everything with the, pretty tight, you know, these budgets are, you know, there's not a lot of fluff in these things. They're bare bones right now. Did the best we could without cutting staff or cutting other services. And I told us during department head meetings, basically everybody kind of had something touched, you know, everybody's not going to be happy on the department head side because we had to make these tough cuts, you know. We, we did our best, we think we did our best to get what we needed to do for the budget. You know, we basically started at $93,000 in the hole and then another, you know, $25,000 to $30,000 came later on. So I thought we did pretty good. We end up balancing it at the very end. We did use some fund balance. Balance at $449 was used to balance it and that's offset by some capital stuff that's in there so that kind of matches up to one-time expenditures in the operating budget. So that was kind of the process. So there's a lot of little cuts here and there, we know that. But we're doing our best to balance the budget.
I'd say one other thing, Mark, too, is that we want, we had originally told the departments to plan on a 2% salary increase for the staff and the police and fire both got 2.25, didn't they?
Yes.
This year and, and, I mean, I just put that out as a beginning thing, so that's what they figured their budgets on. So when we got the numbers, it was based on a 2% increase and we did find money to fund the 2.25, which we really wanted to do, but, so that was additional money that we found, right?
Yes, to make them equal with the union, please.
There is, the property tax did go up 9.26%, basically $700,000, majority of it is related to debt service. So the total property tax levy is $8,217,589. What we're allowed to go up is $214,583, like said, we balanced it within $4,149, which we used to house some capital stuff as one-time expenditures. The debt service, which is exempt from the levy limit, went up $481,000. Tax rate, the rate is 6.65, an increase of eight cents from the prior year, 1.39%. So the average increase is about, you know, $183. I just use, it's a basic, simple math, I just take the average house per the assessments and, and so that's $340,000 compared to last year's $317,000. So if you, your house increase within those ranges, you'll see $183,000, $183,000 increase from the prior year. Total expenditures, if you show anyone up, $318,000, almost two and a half percent from 2019. Revenues went down $250,000 or four percent from 2019.
Mark, can you go back to that percent?
Yeah.
What's driving the decrease in revenues? Is that a decrease in state aid or something else?
A lot of it's just, we used a lot of fund balance last year. We balanced with some of the money from the TIF, so that was, that was fund balance applied. There is some state aid difference. That's, but that's a lot of it is related to fund balance. There's kind of some general highlights. There's a lot of little details when we get into the department heads, I'm just going to put this kind of basic review. The union and non-union are 2.25, which is about a roughly $135,000 increase from 2019. Wisconsin retirement increased, much in, quite about $50,000. Health insurance increased by 3%, but actually in the end, we probably only, I'd only net about $5,000 increase because there's a lot of flip-flopping, you know, people go from family to single, and single to family, and some other corrections, so it didn't really have the effect that really, like how the Wisconsin retirement did. You have a full year of police officer, a full year of park employee, so that was part of the thing, too. Some bigger things I'm going to mention is that, we get to the Riverfront Park expenditures, that increased $75,000. Record in part-time, recreation, full-time wages, $120,000. It's a lot of it's related to the after-school cares programs, the summer programs. But when we get into those budgets, the property taxes only went up, or, went up only about $5,000 to $10,000, so we'll kind of get into that detail there. EMS fire wages increased by $65,000, a lot of it for non-full-time. And that, that is offset, a lot of that's offset by some rate increases. Debt service actually decreased overall. The reason why there's a larger increase because the last year we used $300,000 worth of fund balance, another $200,000 worth of transfer from the general fund balance, $300,000 for the debt service fund balance and $200,000 for the general fund balance. So that's why there's such a swing in the debt service. Our budget and our, our fund balance is 24%. Policy is 15 to 20, 15 to 20, so reserves is, you know, 24%.
Mark, is administration trying to save, save money and that's why they're not using more of the fund balance? Because 24% seems like higher than...
Right. That's part of it, it kind of...
So what's part of it? So you're saving it?
Saving money.
What are you saving it for? I, I mean, I'm just...
Yeah.
I don't think we made a decision to save the money. We, for one thing, if the rest of you have some things you'd like to propose, assuming they're not new, ongoing expenditures, that could come out of fund balance, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Or we could add it in lots of times, we will use it to pay down debt at the end, once we're done discussing the budget, to lower the tax.
The problem, I, is I see it, is if, there are, there are things that I think we all, perhaps, might like to restore. The difficulty is it'll catch up with it next year, given how tight it is this year.
So if nothing else, we can use it to decrease what the tax levy will be, right?
Part of it is, you know, kind of one, didn't use a lot of fund balance for the debt service. So we're kind of leveling it off on our debt service payments here. So, I mean, we can use fund balance, I mean, we didn't use the fund balance, we kind of want to build that back up again, so we're leveling off the debt payments for the future years, too.
So, sorry, Mark, I have a quick question. So when you say full-year police officer, full-year park employee, those are people that we've already hired, that, that this is the first time they're for the full year?
Correct.
So you're not considering adding staff as per comment earlier?
Yeah.
Yeah, for instance, the park employee is starting next week, the one that we approved from last year.
Right.
And the police officer started, what, in March or whatever?
Yeah. Couple decreases, and we're kind of talking about revenues tonight, so we'll kind of get into that, but, you know, transportation went down by 20, it was $24,000. Personal property tax revenue, which was new in 2019, that's, comes from the state, they give us a number, and that decreased by $14,000. We're increasing our right-of-way permits, that's by $30,000, interest income, we did increase that by $173,000. Rec revenue, well, kind of, that's offset some expenditures we just saw, $213, you know, increased the revenue for EMS.
And Mark, can we step back a minute? Is that rec revenue, is that primarily the after-school program?
And Riverfront, that's a major element of this budget. A big one, recycling rebate revenue. I know, and we've been talking this at the finance committee, we go over the monthly financials. We're basically, we're, I think we budgeted maybe $55,000 this year, we're probably going to come in like $20,000, $23,000. It's been a, just dropped off, you know, we've been averaging around $60,000, $55,000 to $60,000, now it's easily gone away for us. I propose using $195,000 of fund balance. What that, part of that is, is capital budget, which we're working on, $192,000 for that and $4,000 to the operating, which is kind of related to some capital items. Challenges add, transportation aid, hopefully, I think we'll stay pretty level now. Our biggest year just came off, so I don't think we're going to take big jumps, we're kind of building that revenue back up, if we spend. Healthcare cost is always going to be a big one. Net new construction, basically, if we didn't have the TIF 2 closing, our net new construction number is basically zero. So that would have been a huge issue, I think. Luckily, with TIF 2 closing and coming over, we had to add in for the levy limit, that made a huge thing, but the net new construction number is an issue going forward. Next year, we'll have, the Riverfront projects will be done, so there should be where we at, I think we're probably right around where we're at this year as a levy limit, but after that, it's going to be really tight. We'll probably go from $200,000 to like $100,000 or less than that. Because the net new construction, or equalized value is what they look at, our equalized value is $1.3 billion. And so we have to net new construction, just to get 2%, is, you know, was it $300,000, was it to get to, you know, some net new construction number to actually have an impact? So that number is going to come, issued here in the near future. Riverfront, put that on there because we don't really know, and we budgeted for it, but still one of those things, we'll have to wait and see, and I think it's going to be a challenge to see where that falls in. Water utilities, the, all the utilities, as we talked about in the capital, our last time we did a rate case was effective 2017, based on what the capital borrowing is and some of the stuff that's added into the operating. We do, do need to do a rate case. Service rates are going to be increasing 20%. 10% of it's really, we just got from Madison Metro Service District, 10% increase. On top of that, we have so much INI infiltration, that 10% is really equivalent to about 13% because we're going, we get billed for all the INI and we're not able to make up for that in our rates, so we need to add into the rates. And some, some is really related to our debt service. Stormwater rates are adjusted based on the budget, that's part of the ordinance, whatever the number in the budget is, to meet our budget requirements, those rates still get adjusted, and there is a little bit of a rating increase for the stormwater. Questions, comments?
Anyone? Mark, can you send us?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then I guess if there aren't any questions, the first item is senior center. Diane, if you have your books, it's on page 129.
I'll just mention before we go on some of these, what was kind of cut, and she can kind of give you the details. We did add a little bit of revenue into the revenue line item for general, general revenues. For this, I think $700. And then we did cut RSVP. We did cut that by 1,000. There's a couple of reasons why that was cut, you know, it was, part of it was, you know, we did a description, it wasn't added up, right? But when I looked into detail, more into history, if you kind of look at the history of it, we're less than $7,000 and this year we're less, we'll probably be right around $7,000. And part of it is, under budget they have, they have 5,500 miles, they charge us so much per mile, and just kind of look like this year, we're only going to hit 3,000 miles. One year we had 4,600 miles, and one year we had like 36, kind of a year before. So we're never going to reach that unless we have a fantastic year, which would be awesome. It just seems like the trends are, we're going to make those, we're not going to make those mileage...
So that number is based on 5,500 miles, are you saying?
The original number was...
Yeah, oh, okay.
So I kind of, it's kind of the rationale, too, why, the history was showing that, too.
Right.
And why it was cut, and so...
So I think we're, we're just going to have to wait and see what happens in 2020. They are also increasing the reimbursement rate. So from October through December, so all the previous budgets were based on 51 cents a mile, and RSVP bases it on the federal recommendations. So from October through December, they are going to increase it to 55 cents a mile, and all of 2020 will be 58 cents a mile. So we'll just have to wait and see what happens. So when I ran the numbers based on the miles, it will increase by at least a few hundred dollars. So if we get to that point, six months down the road in 2020, it's a fantastic program. If you're not familiar with what RSVP is, we, what we pay for in the, the city of Manona pays for a ride scheduler. They coordinate rides between volunteers and seniors for medical appointments only. So not a service I'm really thrilled to cut or give any cuts to because I'm sure it's the most efficient way that transportation can be provided to our senior residents. So, you know, I'm hopeful that if we get to that point, that this many seniors are needing medical runs through RSVP and I come back to this council, that if there is a need, we can work that out at the end of 2020. Yeah, so other things, things to look at, so basically, I like to remind people that the senior services budget, we do contracting. So a big part of our budget, about 25% of it, is contracting with Newbridge, formerly known as East Madison, Manona Coalition for Case Management Services, and Home Shore. So when we look at personnel costs, we don't put them like in the bottom personnel, they're counted as non-personnel, but we are for our case management and home shore coordinator, so increases for their cost of living is calculated into our budget. So you would see those under the contracted senior services line item, which had an increase.
And also you increase the hours, too.
Yeah, yep, and the program development home charge, that are other line item. The other piece that we added this year, so Newbridge is a new name, it's the collaboration of the four senior coalitions in the city of Madison. And this year, it's been their growing year, their transition year, and there's been very little connection between the Manona Senior Center and Newbridge. So when their new executive director and I sat down and talked about the budget, we wanted to build in outreach. So they added, I think it's $800, so that they dedicate hours to case managers coming to the Manona Senior Center every single month, and we've already coordinated, they're going to come once a month, do a presentation, and then talk to seniors. So I, I think they're doing their due diligence, they're going to be present, our seniors are going to know who their Newbridge representatives are. So I like, I like that they built that into the budget so that if they bill us for it, they're going to do it. So, so those are the big increases. And then again, RSVP is a ride scheduler, so it's a person, they get, you know, cost of living increase like, like most staff do. So we talked about how we're going to try to handle the RSVP decrease and then the program fees, we're just going to have to increase fees for services that we provide. So these would be meals or things like, things that the seniors come to. So that's how I'm, I'm going to approach that. That's, any questions on the numbers of the senior center and how that's working? If you looked in the narrative piece, and I don't know, Doug, if you just want me to talk about the...
Sure, yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, so one of the things I talked about as a challenge for next year, and you'll be talking to Jake about his changes with the summer camp program, so it's the equivalent of the after-school program, but in the summer. And he is proposing using the lounge space, so, so the senior center is the lower level of the community center, and the community center uses the upper level. But we've been using the lounge, which is the smaller of the two rooms upstairs, for years for exercise classes. Years ago, Jake designed it with this great shock-absorbent floor, there's storage, mirrors, it's a beautiful space for exercise programs. We currently use it for 40 to 50 classes a month. And in the last year, so for, actually for 2019, June, July, and August, we had about 750 visitors to those classes. That space will be gone for the senior center in the summer, and we're...
Will it be gone the entire time, or is it just the weather's bad? I thought it was if the weather's bad, but...
I, I was not told that, and frankly, we can't haul weights and mats...
Yeah, true.
Just, you know, if there's rain predicted. So I'd rather have a home base for the summer, and I, I've not heard it's for, only for bad weather, but...
Okay.
So that's a big challenge. I'm, we've looked into using school district space, when it was going to be under construction. Nostra Mundo is actually a full-year lease, so we can't use that space, but Nichols might be an option. My concern is accessibility with seniors who might use wheelchairs and walkers. We have a very successful Tai Chi class, but even seniors who use walkers are finding great benefit to that class, and I just want them to feel welcome and to find that the room is accessible. So that's my next step, is to go check that out. I don't know if they would charge for rent or just let us use the space, and they do have storage for all the equipment.
How big a room you need?
The, so, the lounge, so for Tai Chi, for example, we offer two classes because everybody doesn't fit in the room for one class, so we offer two classes back-to-back. So sometimes there's 20-plus people in that room for a class. So at least the size of this room, so the, the Manona room downstairs is way too small to hold these classes in. Nichols would have a, you know, a smaller-sized gymnasium, which would be perfect.
What, what times are you typically offering the exercise classes?
Well, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we offer at 8 o'clock and 9 o'clock. Monday Tai Chi is at 10:15 and 11:15, and Tuesday, Thursday, we do chair yoga at 11:15.
What about the community room of the library? Is that big enough?
The media room?
Yeah.
Would have to do a lot of moving of tables and haul all the equipment. They have no storage. That's the problem with the library, storing all the weights, mats, locks for yoga. I think that would be the hardest part there.
Would this just be for the summer?
It would just be for the summer.
Yeah.
And no school days. But I have no issue canceling class on the, you know, two days in October.
School is...
Yeah, I have no troubles with that. It's this three months in the summer that's going to be a challenge for our seniors, so...
How long do the classes usually last? Like if you sign up for it, how many weeks or...
They're ongoing, year-round, yep, yep. They might take a break if the instructor's gone on vacation or something, but...
Yeah, it, I mean, it's, I think it's really important for old people to get exercise.
It's hugely popular, and the baby boomers that are coming, that's what they're coming for. It's exercise, fitness, health and wellness, so those are the up-and-coming classes. So to just cancel them for three months, we're going to lose people.
Yeah, you can't do that.
They're all going to go someplace else and find their fitness, so I really don't want to do that.
Have you talked to Ryan about that closet in the, off the media, the media room?
In the library?
It is a fairly decent-sized closet that...
Well, we keep the, so we hold mahjong in there and we do store our card tables, but, I mean, the equipment, we're talking...
Yeah, I don't know how big it is.
Several yoga mats, a cart full of free weights, squares, those blocks we would need, you know, I don't know how they're going to play their music in that room. So I, I don't know that they would be willing to share a lot of storage, because I think they store things for the book sale in that closet.
They do sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, so...
What about, what about the sted, the stateroom, that...
The forum room. So one of the other issues is we do exercise classes at 8:00 AM.
Yeah, library's not open.
And the library doesn't open until 9:00, so we'd have to somehow staff, hold the door, kind of babysit that, come in and going. So stretch and tone starts at 8:00 and Pilates starts at 9:00. So the library's not even open by 9:00, so we'd also have to hold the door then for the people arriving for the 9:00 class.
And when, you know, we talked about this at our last committee of the whole meeting, I brought it up to talk about it, and, you know, another option would be those community spaces. We just had questions about, you know, if we're not using city facilities, what are some community spaces that would work, that would be uncomplicated as far as cost and logistics?
Yeah, so...
How would you staff it if you even did it at some place as close as Nichols?
Right now, when we do off-site programming, we, they're self-directed. They set up their own tables, just like, let us know who attended. You know, we probably want to stop in a little, we do this, we'll just stop in, if they're going, do you need anything?
Is there a class leader?
Yep, mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't know, well, so these fitness classes all have instructors, so we'd probably give them the tools to get the class started. And they do their own setups as it is, but we don't set up for Pilates or Stretch and Tone or Chair Yoga, none of our maintenance staff do that, so they're used to doing their own setups. So transferring that to another location, I'm not too concerned about.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess, you know, not that I want to be obviously pitting one department against another...
Right, yes, we certainly don't want to do that.
But I guess I'm wondering why have we strategically made a decision that Jake's program is more important than these exercise classes?
Well, I think typically Parks uses the upper level and Senior Center, that's just been the tradition, Senior Center uses the lower level.
Right.
They were allowing you to use the upper level, I guess.
It's always been Park and Rec or Community Center space.
Well, I'd sort of...
City space, though.
Yeah, right.
It was more rental space and they didn't have, Park and Rec in the past didn't have a lot of programming, that they used that room.
Right, right.
But the Senior Center has used it for, for a number of years.
Long time, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to get a better idea of what he's using that room for, because my interpretation, when I asked him about it, was that it was, and I get that it's not, if it's used on rainy days, that doesn't help you either, but I didn't think he had something planned for it every single day.
So when, when I spoke to Jake, it sounded like they have so many kids, just having two, and I get this, having two spaces allows it to be calmer, so they don't have every, I don't know how many kids he takes, but all kids in one large room, and it is, it's noisy, even downstairs in the Senior Center, so, you know, I don't, I don't know. I think that was more like the separation to have more than one room, so that kids can have a calmer space, or, I'm sure there's some...
But they try to get them outside most of the time, don't they?
True.
They bring them somewhere.
Right, I mean, and I guess that's my point, is if in fact it is only rainy days, then it just seems like maybe they should be going to the Joe Nichols instead of the seniors. I'm just saying, you know...
Well, getting out there would be the reduction, but maybe they'll have to deal with doing something quiet in the main room and two smaller groups on each side of the room or something for a couple hours. I, kind of that many days when it actually rains all day in the summer, really.
Could we not put a divider up in the middle of the room? Could, could, could we put a divider up in the middle of the room?
For the, for Jake's program, you mean?
Oh, in the middle of the main hall?
Mm-hmm.
We've talked about, well, we divide the Senior Center all the time theoretically, but to put an actual divider in, we don't just, you can't put a secure divider in for fire safety and then something non-secure if a kid knocks it over, you know, that's not my, probably a question for Jake, not for me, but...
They'd still be getting the noise.
Yeah, yes, right, you still have the noise, yeah. So I'll keep doing my research and find an alternative, and if we need to use that, then we will.
Well, I think we'll ask him more about it tonight when he's here.
Sure, yeah.
What about the Methodist church?
We talked about that a little bit.
So we use, we use them, they don't have space for storage. So our RSVP project group, Knit and Stitch, they, like, they allow them to have like two boxes to store fabrics, because they do craft projects for the community. So the, the amount of supplies that we need to haul for these fitness classes, because every class has a different group of supplies, I just think would be more than we could ask the church.
So it's, so it's not something you could purchase a storage cabinet for? It's a, I mean, so much stuff than a storage cabinet that you would be able to lock up?
Well, we, we could, I mean, we have the, the free weights on a rolling cart that our staff can barely move, it's several, you know, each senior needs two or five-pound weights, and there's 15 seniors, so that alone, I don't think we'd want it on, you know, mobile cart. And every class is a little different, so we need, we used to store the yoga mats in like a rolling cart, because we used... like a rolling cart, 'cause we used to do yoga at the library, um, but then the squares for the chair yoga, there's that, and, um, our eight o'clock class uses figure eight bands, and the striped hands, and poles, there's just a lot of stuff, so. And if we go to the school, we might have to find some sort of creative storage solution.
Right.
But, yeah.
Well, we'll talk to Jake and see what he-
Yeah.
-has to say about-
I appreciate your concern and asking questions, and, you know, looking at both sides for that, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Diana about her budget? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Will, Media.
I got good numbers.
Page one oh four.
Ready?
Yes. Tell us the highlights.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, everything pretty much stayed the same. Effectively, what we're seeing is about a three to four thousand dollar decrease in our revenue over the past three years. Each year, we see about three thousand or more decrease. Uh, that's what we're looking at in 2020. Even with TDS coming in, we don't anticipate it to go up, we just anticipate anybody in charter to go over to TDS or vice versa. Maybe we'll get some cable cutters, uh, to go back on cable, but we're just pretty much assuming it's just gonna shift to a different cable provider.
It has to be the TV cable, right?
Correct.
Not just the charter heist internet.
Right, well, sorry, spectrum, right, or whatever they call their cable provider. Spectrum, AT&T, U-verse, and TDS. So, those three, and I just figured it'll shift around between those three, and we won't, may, we won't travel again too much. Maybe a little bit with the riverfront and, and the hotel and things, but, uh, we'll see. I, we don't anticipate a real extreme increase by any means. So, we did have to make some cuts, and we, we cut some, some part-time hours, especially because right now we're trending a little bit lower on our, uh, part-time wages than expected. I think it has to do with some of the plan commission meeting canceled. Uh, it also has to do with school board going down to one meeting, uh, a month, uh, along with, uh, other things that maybe just didn't get covered this year for whatever reason. And it seems to be kinda ebb and flow. That also has to, kinda goes with how many employees we have with the high school. If we have a lot, maybe we use a little bit more one year than if we have not so many, then we just can't cover as much. We also took some money out of funds such as like shirts for, uh, crew members, or banners, or things like that, promotional type of items.
That's marketing.
Marketing, yeah. Um, we took some money out of that, quite a bit, about two thousand overall. The one, uh, and that's basically about the decrease that we did, was the part-time wages and the marketing. And, uh, the one increase, however, is that I'm, I'm asking that we increase, uh, the media coordinator's position, uh, from right now, I think it's fifteen sixty an hour, to seventeen fifty an hour next year, uh, based on, uh, some comps that Leah and I did around the area of positions similar to the media coordinator that we have. The median was about eighteen dollars an hour, and the average was about nineteen fifty or something, so, uh, we just wanna at least be competitive, at least be in the ballpark. A, our media coordinator, Justin, deserves it, and B, we need to start kinda having that money available, should anything happen, and we need to find someone else or think of a different plan for employment, we need to have enough money to be able to do something, to attract somebody that has the qualities and experience that we need. So, those are the main, main changes. One thing I'm also, we're also doing, um, with the media coordinator position is, right now, it's, uh, it's overtime after eight hours a day, and we're changing that to be overtime after forty hours, so it's FLSA. So, basically, they have to work forty hours in the week, and then they can acquire overtime after that, as opposed to getting overtime every time they work over eight hours. That position, as you know, going to city events and things, is historically more of the nighttime, and, um, so it's easy to go over eight hours in a day pretty quick, especially when school's in session, and getting there at nine to help work with the announcements and with the students, and then maybe not getting home till nine, that ends up being a lot of hours, and it's a pretty tough ask to ask somebody to work from nine to two, go home for three hours, and come back during the night, that's kinda tough. So, um, maybe a long lunch, but it ends up being longer days. So, this way, at least, it can be, you know, we can then make it up on a Friday or something, and we're done at noon, the media coordinator will be done at noon, or however it works, but it's a little bit easier, easier for Leah and I to, to track the hours and figure out where we're at, and how much we're over, how much we're under this week, and this'll just be a pretty straightforward forty hours. That's about it, as far as the operation budget, and what's been moving around.
Questions? Nancy?
Um, I just wanna go back to the base for the media coordinator. Do you, I mean, given that we're still below what would be considered to be the average, given the comps that you looked at, um, do you feel comfortable that that's gonna be enough, frankly?
No. Uh, it's, it, it won't be enough, um, but it's getting there. I, I think if we ever had to reorganize, um, because we, we would lose our current media coordinator, I might look into three part-time positions as opposed to one full-time. I don't know if, I mean, I think I would definitely take it to the committee and have us wrestle around with it a little bit, to see if that would be a good idea, but that might be one way to combat it, to have somebody come in in the morning, work with the students, leave in the afternoon, have somebody else come in at nights and, and kinda rotate those things. Um, but no, it's, I mean, it's certainly on the lower end of, of pay as far as what we're asking, and just in general, of cost of living and those types of things. But, we're, we're, it's a tough budget year, and we'll have to revisit it next year and see how this works out. Our current media coordinator's been here for many years. I don't anticipate him being here for fifteen years or ten years, so, you know, I'm kinda planning for, when it happens, it happens, and then we'll have to work from there.
So, what's this, is this already increased about two dollars?
Yeah.
And then does that also include the two point two five in addition to that? I can't remember.
Uh, I didn't, I just went to the two dollars an hour.
Mark, just that.
I'll take a look at the, we're gonna discuss these next meeting.
Okay.
'Cause we had all that in a closed session.
In a closed session, okay.
To kinda go over these numbers. So, we'll have that for now, so you can see the actions.
Well, if I could just follow up to that, I guess my, my concern there would be, I, first of all, I appreciate your candor, as always, but I, my concern would be obvious, you know, even if you decided to go to three part-time, people replace in one person with three part-time, I mean, it's ultimately gonna cost us money to get to that.
So, we wouldn't be paying benefits, then? We wouldn't be paying benefits, would we?
Right. That would be the goal, is that, right, you go to part-time, and then you play that game without having to pay that much.
Right, but not, not even necessarily knowing that that's a strategy, if we had replaced this, whoever, you know, this person, it's gonna, I mean, it'd always cost you more when you have to hire new than when you're, you know, so, I'm just a little concerned that we might be penny wise and pound foolish in terms of if that's still below, um, what you're asking.
Nancy, or Kathy?
Yeah, I, I think we have to deal with the current situation, and the current employee, and pay them a fair wage, and when that person leaves, then we have to look at options.
Agreed. It's fairly substantial raise, as it is.
Although, if you take away the overtime.
Yeah.
Well, and that's what we did, so we kinda did a comparison, and it's really, it's less than a thousand dollars one way or the other, depending on if we kept it at the way it's classified now, or reclassify it. We're not really, as, at this point, uh, this year, we're not, it doesn't, we're not calculating that we're gonna save a lot of money by going to forty hours, it's just gonna take a lot of time off of Leah and I to be looking at how much overtime to be used.
It also may, that person may appreciate having some time off.
Right.
And, you know, instead of, I mean, if you, if, if you work a long day one day, and you wanna have a day to do whatever it is, to go to the doctor, or to just go for a bike ride, and, and if there is the time to allow them to do that, time is very valuable to young people these days, so I think that that balancing the time and, and, and it seems that, all, the point I was trying to make is that we're giving them a two dollar raise, but that doesn't mean that it's gonna cost that much more because the overtime will be cut.
Yes, correct.
But he knows that, too. I mean, in terms of it, if, it's not, if it's not two dollars more an hour for him, it's because his overtime's been cut, then, right?
But he gets time, but, but he gets two things, he gets more money, he gets the same amount plus some more, plus he gets more time, and, or, is what I learned when, when we talked about, that is that, or, that, that, that time is valuable to people to be able to do some things other than just be working all the time.
Well, and actually, what, what's happening now, I should clarify, so, they'll work, um, let's say twelve hours, and those four extra hours, they're getting time and a half.
Right.
What, what might happen then is they'll leave early for the week, and they might only work thirty-eight hours, but that, the four hours of time and a half, that starts making up for the lack of the forty hours they're putting in. So, that's where we're staying, at his regular salary, at the regular salary.
Right.
Uh, but that's, again, like Leah and I, and, and him calculating, going, okay, when, you know, and if, if you really wanna look at the numbers, right, we're also losing productivity because we're substituting the lack of hours with overtime hours that are not one-to-one ratio, they're one and a half to one.
Right.
So, he's actually working less and getting paid more, um, right now.
Right.
So, we're getting, we're getting two things with, with the two dollar increase. Um, they're gonna be, he's gonna be working more, but he's gonna be making more. Is it enough? You know, no, but, uh, it's a step, and, you know, we reassess, uh, next year and do another comp of the area and see where things are at. That's about where, where my theory's at.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Will. Um, is Brad?
Brad, it has to switch with me to, to move forward to number six and move me up, but I'm comfortable, the mayor and the council are comfortable having Jake go now, hit number five, and I can, I was towards the instance, I'll do here.
Okay. Jake, you're up. And Mark, what do you wanna start with?
Uh, Parks. Ninety-three. Before Jake starts, there was one change in the Parks Department. They, uh, they hired a new person who's, no, it's not, we budgeted last year a family, we had still a family, and the new person is single, taking a single insurance, so that was about eleven thousand dollar swing in health insurance.
Good thing.
Go ahead.
Well, I do. So, first off, I just wanna say, uh, thanks for having me, and, you know, we look at a lot of numbers, uh, at this time of year. Uh, I feel like our department is a lot more than that, and we can never really tell you the whole story, but we have really amazing staff, uh, I'm proud of the fact that four of our six full-time employees live in the city of Manona, and so we kinda work and live in the community, uh, and I think that benefits what we do and the, um, the reception that we have. We've got an amazing amount of volunteers that make this department go, um, hundreds and hundreds of volunteers from our youth support coaches, special event volunteers, and people that help out in our landscaping beds and gardens, and just picking up trash. So, we've got a pretty big department, and it fluctuates seasonally, um, but overall, I thought this year was a great year in our park system in 2019, and looking forward to what we can do in 2020. As far as Parks goal, uh, we, at their Parks Board, will have a, a small increase in our shelter rental fees, uh, our lake access permits, uh, these are revenues that aren't in the Parks budget, but they're in the general fund, so just wanted to touch on those quick. Uh, we did see a dip this year with our lake access, um, annual passes, and if you remember, we used to sell them at Cottage Grove Ace, and that was about seven thousand a year that we were getting from that site.
At least.
Yeah, at least, and so that kinda well dried up, so we're gonna be looking at partners for this next year on places that would be willing to sell the lake access permits. Now, we've really got a great deal, and West Marine is another one of our partners, in which they don't collect any extra money to do that, that's just a, you know, it might benefit their business getting more people in, but really, it's a, um, courtesy, you know, to us for getting people onto the lake. So, we'll be looking at, uh, partners that might make sense, where we can see some of that kind of, oh, I'm here to do this, I'll pick up my lake access permit as well. Uh, so we will also work on our marketing campaign with our residents, with people that utilize our boat launches, that buying their pass from Manona, that money stays in Manona for the maintenance of the launches. The changes from what our 2019 budget, obviously, the salaries now having a full year of having a full-time staff, um, and the allocation of when we have public works that assist us, uh, we had a, a small amount on our part-time wages, um, kinda to look at what our actual hours are, we anticipate more seasonal assistance, especially during the winter months, at our new riverfront, ice skating, um, that we have, and then what some of our actual hours that we end up with. Uh, health insurance, I think Mark touched on that, uh, we looked at professional development, small increase there, um, our park staff will, both of our new park staff will need to get certified as certified pool operators, aquatic facilities, aquatic facility operators. I did put in what, a best guess on what I believe gas and electric to be included with the new park, um, that would include the utilities during the ice skating season as well. So, during the warmer winter month, the compressor and the chiller will be consuming a lot of electricity, maybe that number, we'll have a much better idea at the end of next year on where we're at on utilities. The other ones are just annual increases, uh, based on our historical averages and predicted 2020 cost. Uh, and we did just one last line item in Parks, we did increase the political restroom account at permanent port which they had at Arrowhead, so ideally, we have all of our playgrounds have at least a port-a-potty there with an enclosure like we see at Ridge Road. So, this year, we did put one at Maywood, uh, and I think was quite well received from people using the park and the bike route, uh, and then next year, we'd be doing the same thing at Arrowhead.
And will they all have enclosures down there? I thought I saw one or two recently.
Yeah, ideally, the long-term goal will be, and as we kind of, as time allows, we'll build those in. Uh, I think we're the one at Arrowhead we'll do right away.
Okay.
Um, there's a standing dead oak tree that needs to be removed at that park, probably another one that we think has oak wilt there, so kind of on Tonya Wata, right off the path, so it can be serviced from the road, from, uh, the contracted company that we have. Ideally, that's just we kinda move forward, is what we do.
Thank you. Any questions? Kathy?
Those two trees that you have to take down, are we replacing those trees?
We will, yes. Arrowhead, unfortunately, will be impacted pretty heavily with the ash bore, we've got three or four, um, mature ash trees around the playground that are starting to show signs of the ash bore, and then what we saw this year later in the summer was, obviously, that tree had oak wilt identified by Urban Forester and several other areas, so, um, it's one thing to have the Emerald Ash Bore that we know, but the oak wilt is kind of a, I don't like seeing that. We've saw, we've seen it in- And we've saw, we've seen it in some of residential trees too, so we'll probably be using some of that money in our operating budget for potential treatment. If we can pre-treat the large mature oak trees that we have for oak wilt, um, is something I think we'll wanna do.
Is that a pretty effective treatment?
It is, yep, if you get it early enough.
Okay. I know there's several trees with oak wilt in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it seemed to be just this, I mean, it's cyclical, we've had it, you know, in the past, but this year especially, it seemed to hit.
We had, the reason I raise the question is because at the last council meeting, we had a discussion about replacing trees, and the council talked about one for one.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need to also look at what we're doing in the parks and, and replacing those trees as well.
Yeah, they may not all be, cut a tree down in one year, plant in the same year, but within a three-year period, yes. It just depends on, you know, Arrowhead's a very visible park, heavily utilized with a playground, replant right away there makes sense. If it's a tree in the way back of a park, and maybe we're in the planning phases for, um, what we're gonna be doing. For example, Stonebridge, we may not replant a park, a tree at Stonebridge, if we have to take it down before we do a major construction project there, we do it as part of that project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nancy?
Um, I guess I, I would just, uh, I know this is something I raised when I was on the Park and Rec Board. And I, and I'm feeling additional pressure now with the riverfront coming on. Um, and, and that is, I'm just wondering if, if in the future, if, um, we could get, in the budget room for parks, if we could get more of a sense of what various programs, the cost benefit analysis by program. Um, the cost benefit by program rather than just lump sums. Um, uh, you know, and I, I recognize that that's not an exact science, but it, I mean, I'm already getting questions from constituents as an example of how much it is gonna cost us to run the riverfront versus how much are we gonna make on it? And, um, and with the after-school program, and, and the big programs.
You do have more detail in the after-school program, right?
Yeah, I have.
I think Mark, because I, and we have the income and I vast for a separate spreadsheet of the expenses which Mark has that I haven't seen yet.
Yeah, I forgot to mail it to him.
Okay, so I'm just talking, I'm just talking about the bigger ones, because it just seems like that that's a better way to tell whether, you know, I mean, we invest appropriately, you know, a lot in our parks, and I don't think, none of us are suggesting otherwise, you know, but.
I agree, for the bigger ones.
But I think for the bigger two things, it would really be helpful to notice that, so what we're actually spending, what we're actually taking, which we don't get in this kind of the overall budget.
Although more in the recreation narrative, you'll find the description on those line items in the revenue section and the expense section that line up. And we do have more detail per.
Right.
But it won't be in the Parks budget, it would all be under the Rec budget, any program needs a special.
I think that's part of the confusion, is there's several different budgets.
No, I agree, yeah.
Anything else about Parks? All right, Jake, what's next?
Rick, or?
Community centers started there at one twenty.
Community center's largely unchanged from last year's budget or twenty nineteen budget, except for, uh, a decrease in what we believe will be our rental fee, um, bringing in. A couple of our existing rental groups that we've had, uh, have decided not to stay on. And again, the, the usefulness or the aesthetics of our center for weekend rentals, um, has declined over, over the years. Uh, our own programming between the senior center department and the Parks and Recreation also takes up a lot of those rooms that might have rent. Uh, we have allocated a, a small percentage of our after-school and our summer camp programs to help offset some of that community center, to show that, that revenue goes into the community center budget. But otherwise, it's a, the, the challenges that we have with the building are just unexpected unbudgeted repairs. So anytime we have major repairs at the community center, they're costly. It's a largely inefficient building as far as utilities and utilizing, um, electricity and heating the building. We will be looking at, at our November, December park board meeting, some potential changes or recommendations to our policy guide as we move in long-term on just how we staff our events on, on weekends versus what the other responsibilities of our full-time staff are. The cost benefit of, of having large-scale, um, private rentals in a facility that now is, is heavily programmed by our senior center department and, and Parks and Rec, and with that, some of the equipment and access to common spaces, et cetera. So, uh, we'll be kind of reviewing what those existing policies are as we move forward, um, and, and potential recommendations for policy change that will come to this board. Nothing right now that would be budget, um, necessarily change the way the budget is, uh, might just be reallocated to some other funds.
Um, how much does the senior center view see upstairs of the community center?
Um, a couple days a week, depending on the program. So historically, Diane and I have talked about use of the building, that, um, we wouldn't program any of our rec programs during the day in the lower level. She wouldn't program at the upper level to allow us the flexibility to program. Over time, we've, um, had requests for use of certain spaces in the upper level, and if we weren't programming anything at that time, we'd say, sure. Yep, that's fine, and, uh, there are three, three days a week that, uh, the senior center utilizes our small, um, fitness classroom, uh, if, if my memory serves me right. Uh, so with our programs that we have, we had talked about and worked with Diane on, um, potentially relocating during the summer. So we have a rain, uh, backup area for some of our summer rec camps. So last year was the first year we went to full-day summer camp, uh, amazing turnout, averaged thirty-seven, thirty-eight kids a week. Uh, we also offer a pre-K, um, two-and-a-half to four-year-old program as well. Uh, and when we have inclement weather, we still would like to be able to hold those classes. But with the amount that we have in a full-day summer camp, we wouldn't need another room, can't fit all those kids into our main hall, um, and effectively run two separate programs.
So I, I thought, I understood that the, that the senior has exercise classes every morning.
Uh, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning, so it's three days a week.
Plus, well, Diane had given us the list, chair yoga is also on Tuesday and Thursday.
Correct, yep, so then we have an additional class there.
So, so you're going to need the upper level?
Uh, during the summer months, yep.
So what happens to the senior?
We had talked about, uh, Diane looking at potentially taking those months off with her, uh, exercise groups or looking at another location.
Personally, I think if you take, taking them off is, is not a good idea because all people need to exercise, and if you get out of the habit of going, you'll go someplace else, so I think that's not a good option, but.
Could you say again that what, what you're, I think I was looking up the numbers there. The last bit about the, I think the expansion of the program they're looking at, or the changes that are coming up?
Sure, so the summer pro rec, and we can get in that during the rec discussion, but it's an expansion of what we've done existently. But we're also at a different site, so, uh, typically, a pre-K camp program's gonna be at Oneida, at Oneida Park Shelter. But if there's inclement weather, you need to have it inside, uh, space that's secured for our classes to meet.
So we don't do pre-K now?
We have, but in there, what happened this year is we ran into some challenges of senior exercises in the lounge. We had our summer day camp because of inclement weather in the main hall, and now we had another twenty, um, two-and-a-half to four-year-olds. We can't put sixty kids in one room, you know, for a period of time.
How old are the other kids?
Uh, our elementary-age camp, we have a K through five camp, uh, that's the, the largest. And we also have a tween, um, a tween sixth to eighth grade bike camp, and that meets every day as well.
Do you know about how many days last summer you had to use the senior center because of inclement weather? Or I mean, not senior center, the, um?
Uh, it was like three out of the eight.
Three?
Three out of, three dates out of the summer, you know, I would say three.
Out of like a three months?
Out of, yeah.
You used the three days?
Mm-hmm.
It seems like we ought to be able to figure out something else for three days, right?
So when they're in, when there is inclement weather, and you've gotta bring the camps inside, what are they doing when they're physically in the space?
Uh, well, it's a camp, so it's arts and crafts activities, it's program activities, but we have to have secured space in our part of the building is, is what it comes down to. Whether it's that type of program, or there's ability to run out the recreation that are fee generating, um, you know, budget-neutral type of activities. And this is, this is a result of, of, of two very popular departments and the programs that we offer. And over time, trying to, um, trying to accommodate those requests that come from the senior center department into what would be our main level or the Park and Rec department space. And now we're at that point where we do need that space back. And whether the senior center wants to look at how they program in their lower level, uh, in those classes, and what are the most important offerings. But, uh, the community that is looking for those type of summer programs for recreation programs for, for children, it puts us in a really tough position if we're asked to put so many kids in one space or cancel a program, you know, at the five minutes before it starts because we don't have facility or space because of inclement weather. So that's the challenge of saying, one group is gonna get bumped. You know, we could say, yes, the senior exercise program can continue, but if it's inclement weather, you're not gonna be able to come to class. Then you have eighteen, sixteen to eighteen seniors that are upset because they don't get to exercise. It's, it's really one group or the other, right?
But, but it, it seems to me, on the senior group, we're talking about making accommodations for them all summer. Whereas the kids, it's potentially three to five days a year.
But once we start canceling those classes, we're dealing with.
I'm not suggesting canceling, Jake. I'm suggesting is, if there's no option, like, they couldn't use the shelter at, at Winnicott?
It's not large enough, when we have that many kids and we need to move around.
Or is another example, Jake, we were, Diane was, and we were just talking about, one of the spaces that she was looking at was the J at Nichols. And but one of her concerns there being accessibility, and someone thinking, okay, well, you've got a bunch of little kids that you need to, that need to run around, and you don't have to worry about wheelchairs, you know, is it, it doesn't make sense to be getting your kids to Nichols for three or five days and leaving the seniors as opposed to moving the seniors, also.
We've been, we've been told we won't have access to the school district this summer because of the renovations happening at Winnicott. So all the renovations in twenty twenty are happening at Winnicott, so we will not have access to any of the.
She was looking at at Nichols, okay.
We won't have access to Nichols, as I've been told.
That surprises me because they're contemplating, considering, I mean, Diane's talked about going to Nichols.
I can't speak for her, all that's the information that we've received.
And I think, you know, it's just we're raising it because it's, it's obviously a concern, we'd like to be able to do both, and
Right.
Boy, you're right, we're getting to a point where the facility isn't adequate to accommodate both. I guess if we had to do it, I mean, Mike, I don't think you could tell, have a program that's set up for pre-K kids and say, we're gonna cancel today, because.
But a parent, you can't, because the parents.
No.
Right.
You can't, you can't do that, that, that doesn't make, nobody's suggesting that.
Right, so, where on the other hand, canceling exercise program for seniors, they might not be happy, but if it's only a few times in the summer, that would seem like a more, if we, if that's the only option we have, then that's more tenable.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think it's difficult, I mean, I, if you went up to Nichols, I don't know how you would transport the kids to Nichols.
Yeah, especially if it's in the middle of the thunderstorm.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a challenge because we have to play the radar game, you know, at seven-thirty in the morning and decide, okay, is that thunderstorm gonna come in? Is it gonna be, uh, you know, if it's a rain, yeah, that's not a big deal, we can be under a shelter with younger kids and, you know, do activities. But if it's gonna be a torrential downpour or, you know, lightning, et cetera, then we certainly don't wanna put them in that type of harmless way.
So you think it's really only three days?
Hard to say, I, I, off the top of my head, yes, Alder Thomas, I believe it was three to four, maybe, that where we had some pretty bad inclement weather.
I mean, I don't know why you couldn't get the email addresses of the people who were in the exercise class and notified. I mean, I just don't know if it was that huge why we couldn't.
Well, and I'm sure the senior center has the capacity for that. And I think a greater point is that Diane was under the impression that this space was off limits, period. I don't think she was clear on the inclement weather piece, so I think that changes the conversation a little bit. And I think that she would be willing to make those accommodations for a couple of times. I mean, obviously, the noise is a factor, and we talked about that a little bit, but I think that, that she wasn't clear on the parameters of the use, uh, of potentially using the space.
I do think we will need to discuss longer term between now and the point that we get a building because we will continue to want a program with revenue-producing programs at the community center on the main level during the daytime. That's in direct conflict with Diane's goals of offering, you know, subsidized programs or instructor, um, you know, revenue-based type of programs as well. So we need to at least address what will continue to be increased offerings for the community, whether it be, uh, a type of a leased facility at a, at a secondary location temporarily. But this is not gonna be, this is an issue that's not going away or not gonna be able to be accommodated because what happens is you get upset seniors at our office yelling at me, you know, versus, because of a, of a program that really, you know, they were very lucky to have, you know, if we were running yoga ten years ago for adults, that space wouldn't have been available. Just we didn't have anything that we were offering ten years ago, and I said, sure, Diane, that's no problem. And, but now here today, we're at kind of conflict with used space.
Well, I, I think that personally, I don't think the upper level is just for the rec department. I, I don't, I think it's a shared space, that, that's, that's, that's just my first opinion. But, but the question is, do you think that, that next year, um, when Winnicott is redone, that, that might provide an option for one or the other of you, I'm not saying which one.
If the district was more flexible, I would say yes.
I think we can get the.
If we can get the district flexible because there's, uh, they have block-off times when they do major cleaning, when they have projects that are going on. When they have their own camps that are being run through the district, summer school is the biggest challenge, is that for the first four weeks of the summer, that we have a K-five summer school, so we don't get any access to the school, because summer school has everything.
I, I'm betting, I'm betting we could get them to be more flexible.
Been working on it for twelve years.
I'm betting we can do it.
The, the challenge is, I need consistent guaranteed space. The only space that I know I can guarantee to my participants is the community center, because I have control over that. Everything else, we don't have control over.
And we're just talking during the summer, as far as the exercise class, correct?
Correct, correct.
Jen, did you have something?
I'm just unclear, like, the, the length of this conversation is based on what we're looking at in terms of numbers now? Are we talking about numbers in front of us now, or are we talking about hypotheticals? Because going on and on about a hypothetical, I guess it's not.
We were not addressing the budget?
Yeah.
Well, we did say we'd discuss it. Well, I guess just let's leave it at we are concerned about having the seniors not be able to use that space, and I think we need to figure out some kind of, uh, interim solution here, so. Anyone else? Okay, did you have anything more to say about the community center, Jake?
Budget costs.
Community center?
No, go ahead.
Just made a couple budget, budget changes to the community center. We actually just cut professional development by two hundred dollars, to go back to last year's amount, just based on prior history, the use of it. And we did increase the maintenance repairs by five thousand dollars, from five to ten thousand, just because history's always been ten thousand dollars, we've been budgeting at five, so. And, you know, two thousand eighteen was fourteen, year fifteen was fifteen. So we thought that was, we needed to increase that to kind of, COVID was going on, the activity that's happening in that account, so those are two changes in that fund.
Anything else about the community center? Okay, what's next?
Okay, what's next?
Be right next to 124, starts the rec department.
I'll email all of these. I don't think our budget notes that I had for the mayor were included in your packet, but I can email you all because it's interesting that I, I typically take each budget and put long-term challenges, first one in rec is facility issues. And I guess I did my first sentence, competition from senior programs for use of the community center, you know, PTO and other groups for school district facilities and our own programs will continue to be a challenge of where we house programs and also where our staff meets and finds equipments for these various programs. So it's, it's not necessarily, having a different site is, is, that's only one piece of an issue. It's also how our staff gets their, the equipment that we need for that program, where we have it. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts in it, but it's certainly one of our longer term challenges when we look at, look at the rec budget. Huge change in this budget overall because of the, the phenomenal support we've had from the community, from our after-school program, the addition of the full day summer camp program, and then also what we're doing at Riverfront. So on the budget line item, we do have Riverfront revenue and a Riverfront expenses as one line item, but within the narrative, you'll see where some of that breakdown of what our anticipated revenue is. So that's all the revenue from ice skating admissions, skate rental concessions during that winter months, and then also concessions during the summer months as well. We did try to allocate out just the after-school program as a separate line item in this budget along with our summer camp. And the summer camp entitles those four, three, three or four different camps that we had talked about. So there's quite a bit of shifting from this, this budget year to next budget year. I'm confident in what we have to offer at the Riverfront, but it's going to take a year or two of kind of running through it to see what the actuals are going to be. But I think with the type of programs that we are planned or have planned and are looking to run there, I, I'm confident that will be, you know, within that ballpark. We did change some of the, where the program fees go, so rec program fees saw a decrease from last year, so we separated out the summer camps. Summer camp was under youth rec. Our after-school program fees, we had 12 kids on a waitlist this year to get in, and next year, we'll probably look at even more. We could, we could open a second site if we had the space based on what the demand is. When we look at what our returning kids are, siblings of those kids, the demand for that type of programming is, is huge. We are anticipating an increase in adult recreation fees based on increased offerings of both in the park system, including Riverfront and what we do at the community center. I did increase the canoe kayak rental, and I think in the narrative, I talked about potentially opening up spots at Riverfront. We did have a slight fee increase from last year to this year. And I'll probably pull back on at least my recommendation to keep the two raps at Riverfront as transit use for this year and see how they go. And I discussed with Aldo Moore about, let's make sure that the getting in and out of the, on the Yhara is feasible and usable because I don't want to create a safety issue for people. If it's just too, you know, the current of the water, trying to get the canoe up over those walk-in steps is too challenging, then we'll have to revisit kind of what, what that is. So even with the keeping our 54 spaces that we have in the city, we'll be able to maintain that much of revenue. There's still a overall demand for those spaces. I did decrease our projected revenue under our park field rental account. This is based on this year's actuals. The weather events are killing, you know, they're killing us as far as canceling, having canceled a lot of activities and games because of these major swings in weather, getting these three, four inches of rain at one time. You know, it's not just one day at like Huska for the baseball field, it's three days to typically recover. So we just have to start budgeting that we're not going to be getting as many games than as we have historically that are being paid for.
Is adult softball as popular as it used to be?
No. Participation in the Manona Adult Softball League is decreasing consistently over the last five to six years. And what we do for them is we take the registration fees, the individual player registration fees, and then we collect per facility's agreement about $3,000 that goes into that account, and then the rest gets paid out to the association. So that's kind of our, the way we get, make sure we get our money and also to help them out with registration. But they're down to two nights a week from, you know, long, 20, 30 years ago, four or five nights a week. On the expense side, we had our administrative salary based on our full-time staff allocation. Our increase, the wages in the part-time is significant increase based on the after-school program, summer com, summer program and Riverfront. So right now, we're budgeting for about, at Riverfront, obviously, the winter month, right? Thanksgiving through end of March, March, seven days a week, up to eight to 15 hours a day, depending if it's a weeknight or weekend, that we would have staff working at that facility. And then in the off-season, or what I would call the summer season, Memorial Day through Labor Day, we're looking at having consistent business hours during the week and on the weekends that would have, you know, concessions available for purchase for people coming in, but also having programs down there and having a staff person down there. So that's where you see quite a significant change had previously. We had an increase in our professional development expenses as we get more staff, especially for some of the childcare programs. Those would be opportunities for that staff to be able to get the professional development along with our full-time staff. After-school program based on our additional students, additional expenses, summer camp expenses, its own line item, and then the Riverfront expenses as we talked about earlier.
Questions, anyone? Are you done?
Yeah.
Nancy?
I just have a, I'm confused as to where you've talked. When you, special event revenue, are you talking about our special events or are you talking about the revenue that we get from other people over our stuff?
Nope, that would be our, our events.
So where are, where is the revenue from other people?
That goes into, it's either park shelter rental or it would be under park field rental. So park shelter rentals are general fund revenue.
Right. But what, like, for instance, all the runs and mocks that we talked about at Park, where we increase the fees to make sure that we're, I'm just wondering where that-
I think they go under park shelter rental. I think it all goes, I'd have to, I'd have to double check it. It typically lines up to a room or a field or a facility is how we tie those out to.
Okay. Because we obviously spent a lot of time increasing the revenue there to make sure that we weren't out of pocket for all the runs.
Correct. Yep.
So I just, I was trying to find out where those were.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, next.
Pool, which is 135. Oh, just saw it, will be cut on there. Or we did cut park field maintenance, be cut by $2,000 based on the history, you know, like you just said, less activity on there, so it should be a decrease.
Okay, sorry. Pool, as I probably say each year, Missy Kuzorski is an amazing aquatics director and does a fantastic job with the amount of staff that she has to supervise and keep the pool up and running, consistently get high praises for the use of our hours that we have available for people and dealing with all the different groups. Every group wants, you know, full access of the pool at all hours, and I think her and her staff did a great job. As the facility continues to age, I would consider as we kind of go through the long range facility process, that outdoor pool is included in those discussions. Pool will be 30 years old in 2023. That's typically what we look at as far as life spans for outdoor pools. We've done, kudos to you guys as a council, have always done an amazing job at providing funding for renovations to our mechanicals. And so I, I think overall, the pool's in really good shape. But we will continue to look at kind of where we want to be in the next 30 to 50 years. The budget is, is fairly similar to what in 2020 to 2019. We will see increases in some revenue producing line items based on increased fees. So our season passes are going up at $3 across the board for family or individual passes. Swim lessons include for a $2 increase. Season passes did very well, have done very well over the last couple of years. And I think that's a direct correlation to the hours of operation. So we basically increased the amount of open swim time that we have available for our members, our season pass holders, and both have seen good marks over the last couple of years. We're budgeting for basically our, the increase in our daily admissions, daily admission fees will stay the same from last year. That's based on what our 2018, 2019 actuals were. It was a kind of an odd pool year this year. June was really wet, not great. July was a monster as far as revenue, probably the most amount of money we've ever brought in in a one-month period. And then August was what typically August is, it's just so-so. So, but overall, it was, you know, we met our revenue goals. Increase in concessions and then increase in swim lessons. We are looking at potentially how we share our space with swim and dive over our facility use contract. So again, with the changing dynamics of our community, we have a huge demand for night lessons, when we go to swim lessons, not nearly the amount of demand for during the day lessons. So what we did with like our summer camp program is part of three days, I should know this because I have a child in the program. Because either three days a week or every day, the kids in our summer camp program got swim lessons within that. So we did swim lessons and tennis lessons with those summer camp kids as an alternative for working parents to have to come back at night to bring the kids to swim lessons. But we still saw that huge demand. So we're looking at potentially maybe swim team might get more pool time in the AM and we get more lanes because we share both morning and evening. And how we can keep those swim, you know, keep the swim lesson numbers where they're at. Pool rentals is where the payment for swim and dive team is housed at and also includes the private rentals that we have as well. On the expense side, wages increase. We are still looking at the, the other personnel services to allow for contract cleaning of the locker rooms on the weekends. It didn't happen this year, but with the FSLA hours and, and now having 15-year-old lifeguards, it's, there's some very, there's some rules that we have to follow that don't allow them to work past, I think, 10:00 PM. And that becomes a sticking point on the weekends when we have events and private rentals and try to get cleaning done. The professional development, we talked about, I think one of the reductions was in pool operating supplies. So we split out kind of where we, our chemicals, purchasing in our water management contract from pool operating supplies to building maintenance and repair. And then typically, pool operating supplies is everything else that we need for the pool, including outfitting our lifeguards and staff with t-shirts, first aid kits and swimsuits. And then the professional development is for certifications needed for Missy, and then like our head lifeguards are also get certified in a LGI, so a lifeguard instructor certification, which then allows them to run our in-services. So we have to have documentation that we've done in services, that we're following all of our Red Cross protocols for operating a pool, and that someone with a certification has that. So that's where some of the difference in our professional development. We did talk that we have some money in our trust agency and our donation account that we can offset some of those reductions that were happening this year. So I am comfortable with that. But as we, you know, that operating supply also includes like toilet paper and janitorial supplies, so kind of budget based on what we anticipate for revenue. If we go way over on revenue, obviously, our supply costs go up as well. And typically, that means where you're using more chemicals in the pool or having, you know, buy a few more maintenance-related items.
Jen?
Um, this summer, we talked about, we're having some trouble getting the county to come do their inspections. I'm wondering where that falls in here and then if that really was continuing and if that's something we should try and address, are we going to go paying the county to do the inspections if it hasn't show up?
Yeah, I agree. Pool operating supplies is where permits go for Dane County Public Health, and that's for both the concession stand and a review of our pool procedures. And so what Aldo Corr is mentioning is we pay, I think it's $2,300 a year, give or take, to Dane County City Madison Public Health, and they're the regulatory agencies for food establishments and outdoor pools. And historically, we will always receive a preseason inspection of our pool, including a mechanical room, make sure we're following all of the state regulations regarding the outdoor pools. And then they come once a month to test, to do, test our water. If there's presence of coliform, that's what that is, or any other bacteria related that's above a threshold for closure, we have to close, follow the proper protocol to get the pool in chemically balanced before we can reopen. This year, we did not, I, I believe the rationale, or the, the answer I got was staff shortage or staff challenges. We did not receive our inspection until-
Did they give us our money there or we did give eventually?
No, they actually came out and inspected the pool with about a week to go of the season.
Well, that doesn't seem right.
As opposed to once a month?
Well, the once a month water testing happened. It was the, the inspection of the overall facility, including a review of our staffing plan, making sure that all of our staff are certified, et cetera, which is supposed to be done before the year. So it is something I think we want to continue that with Dane County City Madison. I mean, they are the regulatory agency, but certainly if we were doing something wrong as far as how we were operating or that we didn't have all our Ts crossed and Is dotted, I'd want to know sooner rather than later, you know, for the benefit of our patrons.
Right. Is that a, is it a scheduling issue, meaning like if we reached out to them prior to the end of this year to schedule for next year or January 1?
No, because they just show up, they want to have that flexibility of showing up so we're not, so we don't have everything like, you know, cleaned up and thrown in, with everything else thrown in the basement type of deal before they come. But I think it might be just an issue for you two sitting down there to talk with our Dane County friends and make sure that we're getting our-
Yeah, if we're paying for it, well, we should be getting, we need to have that service.
Correct. Now, on the other end, the same regulatory agency did a fabulous job at testing our beaches this summer. They tested Frostwoods and Schluter Beach weekly, you know, on time, and, and were very responsive if we had closures. So I, I do believe that that particular part of the department, they have a large amount between the, they oversee restaurants and all outdoor pools. Sometimes it's a, a kudos to what we do because it's, our inspections generally come back very well and they're like, we don't worry about you guys. But again, it's a lot of money we are paying. We like to make sure that we're getting those services.
And I'd hate to find out we did have a problem, we weren't aware of it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Nancy?
I know that we've discussed, at least since I've been on council, lifeguard judges. And I imagine that that's not getting any easier given that it's such a tight job market.
It's, it's not, I'm, I would not recommend anything additional at this point until we look at our full-time staff. Missy does an amazing job, and what we do differently is instead of paying $200 to $300 for a lifeguard certification, because I have Missy the rock star, she will train you for free. So we will say, you'll get your certification from Manona Parking Rec for free as long as you work two to three shifts a week, or there's a threshold of the amount that you have to work for us. For what it costs us is $35 per employee to pay for the certification. So, and we work with La Follette and MG to identify those that might be interested and get the word out. So over the last couple of years, it's always a challenge. We won't, we will not be able to compete with City Madison. We are comparable, we're still on the low end between what I would completely use our comparable pool, Subprairie and Middleton as far as outdoor pools. comparable pool, Subprairie and Middleton as far as outdoor pools. But basically my discussion with Missy on how she feels that yes, we could obviously always pay more for lifeguards, but we're at a place now where we think we're okay. We've trended quite a bit younger. I mean, that's probably the bigger challenge is that with the state law allowing fifteen year olds to lifeguard, you know, we're skewing younger than we, than we were a decade ago. We have much more high school lifeguard staff than college. Ability wise, not necessarily a huge issue. It's usually more on scheduling availability on, in August when they go back to high school for athletics or extracurriculars, they might not have as much availability. So what we do do, I think with the certification, with the amount of hours that they're available to get and picking up, so I think that's what, at least similar to what we heard is, yeah, you may work for City of Madison, but you're only scheduled like eight hours a week versus here, you can work thirty hours. So I'm okay where we're at right now.
Anybody else? Okay, is that everything for Jake?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Brad's here, so.
Hi, Jake.
Am I up next?
Yep.
Brad is on, Brad is part of the executive other budget, office budget. So that's, numbers are on page twenty-eight, descriptions are page thirty-one. And there was two adjustments, actually three adjustments. There was sustainability initiative that was taken out for twenty thousand, which I can talk about later. We did the budget before we had the final budget numbers from Brad's, we added a thousand back in there. And then we also moved the interns for the planning and sustainability intern under, into its own separate line on our administration intern. And we reduced that by three thousand dollars, the overall total.
Okay.
Brad?
So I'll, I'll start with the intern. I think, I don't know if Brian will talk about this, I think this is in your budget now. The intern position was combined with the city planning intern position for a couple of reasons. One, efficiency, two, the amount of workload. We wanted to try and find candidates that could do both so that when they didn't have sustainability work, they had plenty of planning work, when they didn't have planning work, they had plenty of sustainability work to do. Also, the position is more comparable or similar to other positions in other municipalities that are full-time planning sustainability positions or sustainable planning positions. In Middleton and Pittsburgh, they have two, each of them have a full-time position. Each of those positions are sustainability related, but fall under the planning department. And so to be more congruent with those cities, we decided to merge the two internships. And as Mark said, it went from, it was reduced by three thousand total. The sustainability side of the budget was a request for nine thousand of whatever the total ends up to be.
Right.
So, and then the combined amount from planning and sustainability was reduced by three.
Although we still, that, what was in there in the budget was actually more than we needed to cover the number of hours for planning. So it wasn't that we were cutting the hours of anybody.
Okay.
Perfect, it was based on yesterday.
In fact, I think we still have enough money in there to cover some of those hours.
Good, good. Because there's plenty of work for that position, so. Then the next item on my line items for this budget, okay, that's...
Did you get two?
Yep. Is, so five hundred dollars for project management and professional development. Typically, this is used for the sustainable, or growing sustainable communities conference in the youth. It's a regional conference, but it's largest of its kind in the area. The resources that the city gets and the market, or the marketing, the networking that we have, the capabilities that we have are pretty unique in that conference or with that conference. I'm actually attending next Friday as a panelist. Will be presenting myself and a member of Slipstream's project, or consulting's team will present on the Office of Energy Innovation Grant and the collaborative project that we have with the six other municipalities for trying to develop clean action plans for each municipality, so. The five hundred dollars outreach and marketing is a generic, it's an annual fund, it's always been in this budget. It covers things like printing costs, it covers T-shirts, it covers any kinds of other marketing projects that come up or pop up, hiring in people or subsidizing costs for people to come in and present or otherwise. So it's typical, that's always been in there and it's always been five hundred dollars as far as, as long as I've been staff. This five hundred dollars for the Earth Day Clean Sweep and E-Cycling Event is to subsidize costs of hiring companies that do these types of specialized recycling to come into the city of Manona, hold one central event on a Saturday during Earth Day week, that's our projected timeline. To pay for any types of dumpster rentals or otherwise, five hundred dollars should be sufficient to cover all those costs. If we find out that it won't be, we can always do like a resident comes in, they pay ten dollars at the gate and then they're allowed to dispose of everything that they have, regardless of what it is. So some of these events, the companies that come in, they'll actually do it for free because they make money off the recycling. We figure that it's a good event and we compare different types of outreach projects with that event so we can do other types of public awareness projects at the exact same time. And in itself, it is a public awareness project, so. The two hundred and fifty dollars is the, is for the sustainability toolkit updates and maintenance for the sustainable purchasing policy. We do not necessarily have to do this every year, but I wanted to make sure we updated it this year because we will be implementing it with staff this year through the admin office, Brian and I, and our intern. This sustainable toolkit is essentially a list of companies that manufacture the same goods that we already purchase in a mass format, if you will, that do so in a more sustainable way than the products that we currently are purchasing. So in a sense, it helps us price out alternatives for what we currently purchase and hopefully that helps us reduce our carbon footprint, reduce our waste and maybe even reduce our costs in terms of purchasing. The three thousand dollars, the next item is to participate again in 2020 in Madison's Group I Solar Program on the residential side. As you'll see, I don't know if you'll see it actually, but we eliminated the Madison Business Program, which was originally proposed. So this is, we had two so far sign up in 2019. We have more likely that we'll be signing up to participate in this program. We had, I want to say thirty that attended the events or more.
No, definitely more than ten, it's thirty-nine that applied.
Applied, sorry, yep. Thirty-nine residents that applied, fifteen were approved for the, this type of installation and then at this point, as we know of, two have signed up to do it, so. The Madison marketing, the seven hundred and fifty dollars, I believe is eliminated now.
It is eliminated.
So that does not need to go in here as that line item. And thank you Nancy for that, for coordinating with Renew. And then this thousand dollars is for an energy campaign that the Sustainability Committee is already in the process of planning. It's to build awareness in the community to help us towards our, the city's clean energy goals, the one hundred percent clean energy resolution. There's a major and a very significant side of that resolution is trying to get the community and business, residential and business community to reduce their carbon footprint, to reduce the amount of energy that they use from non-renewable sources. If you look at the resolution, it says, I believe by 2040 or 2050, that the entire community will be at a hundred percent renewable energy consumption, which is a huge feat to get to. Building awareness now is just a stepping stone in doing, in getting to that goal.
And I just, I just want to comment on that, the, the marketing tools, one of the things that we've been really trying to do in spreading awareness is using materials that don't go against our carbon footprint reduction philosophy. So mailers that can be put in the ground and grown into seeds or made from a hundred percent recycled paper or, you know, a hundred percent recyclable paper that they, you know, it can be, we can reduce that, that component on our end to show people that we're serious about these goals. And that just tends to be a little bit more expensive. So we wanted to make sure that we had a, you know, we were covering ourselves for that, so.
It also supports local companies that align their business goals with the committee's goals, so. That's all the items on here, I believe.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
And the T-shirts are available at City Hall front desk.
New colors.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Brian.
Thank you. Short thumbnail, not a lot of changes for the kind of administrative side of the budgets. Let's go to page twenty-five, start with me.
I'm sorry, you might have to come up here.
Oh, that's a good point.
Sorry.
Not a ton of changes here on page twenty-four. The only thing of note is under legal, we did reduce that by ten thousand. That's a part because we're just being more judicious in how and when we reach out to the city attorney for things. So a lot of things like ordinance writing, I'll take the first step at that, getting a draft so that bill doesn't necessarily have to start from ground zero, which saves us some time.
Saves us time, you just didn't want to say it?
Yes, it saves time. Yeah, so just, just trying to be more mindful of when we use legal time.
Why don't you do this?
Let's not. So no major changes there unless you have any questions on legislative, legal and judicial. Executive office, again, no major changes there. Other than the one Brad talked about, combining the two intern positions. We felt it was best to put it under the executive office, just, you know, in terms of the management, it's easier for me to keep track of that. Although both Brad and Douglas will have, they have constant contact with the intern and I'll kind of drive the work plan off of the intern. But in terms of budgeting, it was easier to collapse it into one budget rather than having it in two budget line items.
And you do have an intern now.
Yes, we do have an intern now from UWU. She's, she's great, started two weeks ago. So Brad and Douglas both have her, working on plenty of stuff, so she will not be bored. Which is one of the things that we found out in having two separate intern positions. They each were budgeted for about ten hours a week, actually when I started here. And like Brad said, sometimes you'd have, the planning intern would have, you know, some work, but not a full ten hours and so they wouldn't be here the whole time and, you know, vice versa for the sustainability intern. We just thought there was some time efficiencies if that was the same person, because then they could just always be working, have them here at a consistent time. Because that was the other challenge with having two separate interns, they might have different class schedules, so, you know, one could be here on Monday and Friday, but not here in the middle of the week. And the other intern might be here Tuesday, Thursday. It was just, it was always hard to know when the intern was going to be there if Brad or me or somebody had, we're now one intern, we have a clear schedule, you know, they'll be here for, you know, a chunk of the day on Wednesday and a chunk of the day on Friday, kind of get the, the best bang for the buck in terms of efficiency.
In this case, she's not a student, she's, she's already graduated.
Yeah, considering graduate school, yeah, thinking about it. So then if we flip to page forty and forty-one, personnel, no major budgetary changes there, although from a policy standpoint, we are still working on the FMLA Pay Family Care Policy. We hope to have a draft of that to the council for discussion, kind of after we get this budget process wrapped up. But hopefully to have a decision from the council by the end of the year. Which one, page? Oh, yes, sorry, the only one change is mayor pay. Page forty-two, we did drop that by five thousand dollars. Again, you know, mayor was looking at ways to kind of reduce our expenditures for tax levy. And long-term, we'll, we'll take an evaluation of the employee rewards program and see if there's maybe a different or better way to do that than what we do in the past.
And last year we increased it quite a bit because of the flood.
Flood, yes. Then if we flip to page forty-three through forty-five, IT, no major, I checked with Leah, no major changes anticipated for IT upgrading.
No questions?
Yeah.
So last year, I know we discussed whether or not, excuse me, whether or not it would make sense in the longer term to have somebody that was our own IT person beside Leah totally being sucked away all the time and at a lesser amount and then have a contract person with a higher school level. Was that discussed at all or we just decided to not?
We didn't talk about it a ton. I mean, we're, same with legal, we try not to engage IT if we, the contracted IT services, we can avoid it.
Right.
We can solve it in health, we do that first. I mean, I think that is something we could take a look at. I worry about, say, I worry about being able to hire somebody part-time that we're going to like and get the bang for our buck for that position if it's not, if it's not a full-time position. And I don't know that there's enough work for it to be a full-time position.
Okay.
But I, that's something we could take a look at.
Then the other thing is, I was just hearing a lot lately about, like, it seems like just about every day in my mailbox, something's coming up about the number of municipalities are being hit by cyber ransom coins. Are we concerned about that? And are we doing anything for cybersecurity to make sure that's can?
It's funny that you mention that, not because of anything bad except, I unfortunately had to sit through a two-day seminar on cybersecurity for Wisconsin Emergency Management and it's actually worse out there than you think in which area. From our standpoint, we're sitting pretty well in terms of the firewalls that we have in our system, the, the type of training and education that we provide to our staff. And we've had a couple of small hiccups over the years. One thing that we are talking about is doing some additional training on phishing emails. That's where a lot of the, where a lot of this ransomware is coming up from. So getting staff to understand, you know, if it's not coming from a sender that you're familiar with, it's, the language is not, you know, if there's misspellings or whatnot in the text of the language, it's probably something you don't want to click on. That's half the battle is getting, kind of changing the culture. So that's definitely something that, that Lee and I have identified that we'll be working with our IT staff on how to kind of better train up people. But in terms of our overall structural system, we feel pretty confident in that. But, I mean...
People know what I, what I'm tackling.
Yeah, I say that, I say that knowing that you can never be a hundred percent confident because it just takes one, one ear and click on something and you could be in trouble. But...
Have tamale.
Right.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's something we're, we're definitely mindful of.
And if you think you have accidentally clicked on something, call Leah right away.
Call Leah and don't forward it.
Right.
Yep.
So we thought we had her, drug deposit change and it wasn't her.
I kept calling and I was like, where's my check?
Yeah, but I appreciate you ringing it up because it's something that I'm mindful of, having sat through those two days. The horror story.
They were saying that it's just catch twenty-two because there's all these cities that are literally paying the ransom.
Yeah.
Because it's cheaper to pay the ransom than it is to rebuild your entire system.
Yeah, the, the advice...
We bought the ransoms and so, yes, but then the insurance companies and everybody else has evolved and saying, we don't want to get into a habit of paying less.
Yeah, I'll, I'll save you the two days worth of class, you don't have to go to it. Their advice is, is to not, because you, you actually make yourself even more of a soft target.
Sure.
Because you've identified that you could be hit again and you're just going to keep paying and even if you pay, there's no guarantee that your system is going to be released.
Right.
So your best bet is to unfortunately bite the bullet and start again and install some more security.
Any other questions about that?
Okay, I think last assessments, page forty-six through forty-eight, we included a placeholder number in the budget based upon the RFP responses that we've gotten back for second services. That'll be going to Personnel and Finance Committee for a second look at our meeting next week, Monday, assuming that our resolution's ready to come out of that. We'll have that in the docket for first read on Monday, the twenty-first, and then a second read at our next meeting in November for a contractor for that. We got two responses back to that RFP. I sent it out to five different vendors and we got two back and I think that's just a function of... We got two responses back to that RFP. I sent it out to five different vendors, only got two back, and I think that's just a function of, you know, it's, it's not a field where a lot of people are going into, and there's only so many firms that are doing this work, and they're kind of, you know, any of them are overbooked with clients, so it didn't shock me that we only got two responses back. Um, but we'll, we'll have some more information on that come Monday evening. Uh, then if we go to forty-nine, uh, on insurance, uh, no major adjustments, although you'll note there is a, a drop in uh, insurance for healthcare, which is good. But as we mentioned at a previous city council meeting, our property insurance is going to go up because of the new, uh, parks and structures that we're going to be insuring. The net result is, is pretty much a wash for us compared to last year.
Questions, anybody?
Okay, and then last one is CDA, so if you go to page, uh, one hundred, and one oh-one to one oh-three, uh, no major, uh, adjustments or increases in this budget. Uh, you will note that the transfers from general fund and the transfers from TIF do cover the expenditures, uh, in the CDA budget, that's mainly staff time and some, uh, special project consulting, uh, for support. Other than that, everything else is pretty straightforward.
Any more questions for Brian? Thank you. No, it's for the really fascinating stuff. Or no, it's Joan, sorry.
Wow.
I was, sorry, I didn't mean to insult you, I just wanted to kiss you so badly.
Thanks, man.
Page, page thirty-five, it starts.
Notes and talk at the same time, you think I'm not in the desk. So the only major change, I'm not going to go through it all because it really has not changed much. The only major change is we, in the courts office budget, is we wanted to bring professional, professional development up to what actual uses. Uh, with Aleen, um, next year will be her third year going to UW Green Bay Institute to be certified as a Wisconsin municipal clerk. Um, it's quite expensive to do that, um, so it's a full week and accommodation. Um, so needed to raise the budget to cover that and, um, to make to what is actually, the actual use. Um, well, we did keep it the same, but it was, it was reduced and then brought back up. That's what mine looks like.
Right, we had changed before you got in here.
Okay, um, and then the other, they have a change in elections is, um.
The next page.
The next page, yes. Is, um, wanted to raise salaries for election inspectors. We are, we've maintained at minimum wage plus one dollar for chief inspectors. And I did a salary, got a salary survey, um, of what people, um, in the entire state pretty much are paying election workers. And, um, we are really low, even with providing meals, so, um, I've already had one, um, former Madison inspector, um, saying, gee, I work, I could work in Madison for twenty bucks an hour. And I'm like, yeah, I know, but you're not going to work here for twenty bucks an hour. So, um, what I wanted to do is be conservative, um, people who work here, really, you're not doing that type of work for the money. Um, you're doing that type of work to serve your community, and that's what we emphasize. Um, you are serving your neighbors, your, you are ensuring people you know have a, a fair, clear, transparent election done properly. So it's much more important for us to emphasize that type of commitment rather than, uh, supplementing your income. So I did want to raise it to, um, ten dollars for an election inspector and then twelve dollars for, uh, chief inspector. Chief inspectors are the ones in charge of polling place, not me. Um, once the election is set up and running, I am more wanting to provide service to them. It's not my job and shouldn't be my job as the clerk to be at the polling place during an election. So we count on our chief inspectors in particular to be in charge of what's happening and make sure that everything runs smoothly and let's, let us know whenever anything is not running smoothly so that we can deal with it. We have great dedicated workers in Menona, and, uh, we are going to be asking them to be a little more computer savvy with the, um, electronic poll books. So, um, I think it's, we will be reducing our workforce somewhat because the poll books require, uh, less workers, um, but we still will need quite a few, and and we're going to expect a little more out of them for the type of, um, expertise they're going to be to have. So, um, I think it's fair and reasonable, and we haven't, you know, raised pay all these years really, so, unless the minimum wage went up, so. And that does bring us to fairly mid-range, which is, Menona's general, uh, place in any salary pool is generally pretty much median, so. Right, you know, so we're good. We're not going crazy, but we're, um, because, you know, it, I don't know. And we try to, we try to do, I mean, a lot of communities have election inspectors set up polling places. They have them do a lot more, um, heavy lifting than we do, than we require, so. There's, you know, pluses and minuses to anywhere they work, so.
So you're saying you do all that heavy lifting yourself before they, you know, you have some staff who help too.
We do now have, yes. Now I'm a deputy clerk, thank God, and we also, um, have, now we have a public works, uh, person, who helps us do the setups and stuff, which is nice. And then at night too, um, on election night, machinery needs to get here. Although, um, there will be a change in that, um, just this week, um, uh, modems are, wireless modems are being installed in the, uh, vote tabulators, and so, uh, chief inspectors will be sending the results right from the polling place, which is really nice. And also takes, um, some of the stress off of.
Our social results?
Menona's last again. No, not last. Um, and it takes a lot of the pressure off of, uh, of, of chief inspectors to get materials here to City Hall so that I can get it, more than a dollar. Um, and it also will get our results to the county much faster, so. It's a huge improvement. That will be a huge. And it's, it's honestly, like, yes.
I'll trust you on that.
Yeah, it's not, you don't have to like, you know, screen tells you what to do.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so that, that's it for me really for changes. I, I really just, everything else is status quo and going very well in the courts department, so.
Just so you know, the election budget, we don't really change the budget from year to year. So if you kind of look at the past history, it kind of yo-yos based on the number, number of elections there are. Some year, like, present year was twenty-five thousand, and the year after that was on eight thousand, and bumps up for the governor in nineteen. So we don't account for that, we just, you know, keep the same number each year, you know, granted the change she made. So we don't have that fluctuation every year we do the budget. So this year, I'm guessing with the president election, in reality, we'll probably use some fund balance in the end. We'll, it'll probably be over at the end, but we saved the money from two thousand nineteen, so. It just, it evens itself, evens out over two years is the way we look at it internally.
Does anyone have any questions for Joan? Thank you, Joan.
Is it next revenues? Let's just start with revenues. I'm going to start with the revenues if that's okay on page seventeen. We'll pass this out, this is just quick. Things we have to go through. It's just passing out what the, what basically what the changes were to revenues, the major changes. Personal property tax and the taxes decreased by fourteen thousand. Um, that's just the number we get from the states. That number's basically, it's really based on WPS. It seemed like they're, before they changed it, what the state gives us number, that number would fluctuate every year anyways. It was always based on, uh, it seemed like more software, computer ware, or personal properties, uh, WPS had. Uh, newer stuff, it seems it was higher when they depreciated, it was a lower thing, so. That fluctuates, it will fluctuate now here every year, I think, for a while. Taxes from utilities, we do check, we do charge our water utility, and that's common throughout, throughout, uh, almost, families do that. So that should increase by five, just based on the mill rate and an increase on fixed assets, because it's based on fixed assets. That's how we calculate that number. Taxes from other exempt, um, properties, we call this payment loan taxes. Like Menona Metals, Goodwill, they don't pay a property tax, they pay a payment in loan taxes. A lot of times it's based on, uh, CPI, so each year it's going to grow and grow, so, you know, this year was fifty-eight thousand we got, so next year it'll be closer to the sixty thousand, so we increased it uh, by five thousand.
Mark, sorry, are those, um, are those continue agreements, or do they have sunsets where we go back and relook at them at?
Uh, they were made before anyways, and they've all been continuous agreement, you know, sunset. I'm something I can maybe look at.
Just wondering if some of them could be renegotiated if you felt those.
Well, Leopold's one of them. To learn. To learn. Uh, fire insurance, we just include, increase that just because it's increasing every year. Um, more cost, it goes up, so. Increased that by three thousand dollars. Transportation aid is a number we got after we kind of, once the budget finished. Um, that decreased by twenty-three thousand, or twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-five. Exempt computer aid, um, last year's number for the budget number, I guess, was put too low. It's basically two percent of the prior year, so the prior year final number, two thousand nineteen final number was four thirteen thousand, instead of four and five thousand, so that ends up increasing by eighty-two hundred dollars. The next one is one of the big ones, is, uh, exempt, and, um, the right-of-way, basically the right-of-way permits, we're calling them. So it went from twenty to fifty thousand. Um, we're estimating to be about a hundred thirty-five thousand, and I was looking at today, it's probably going to be about a hundred and forty, maybe a hundred and forty-five at the end. A lot of it's TDS, um, but also, as last year, we hired a, uh, utility worker, additional two, utility worker, so another person's able to focus on the right-of-way permits. What's, what happened is we're capturing a lot of costs, revenues we weren't capturing before. We're never going to get to a hundred thirty-five, now it's kind of a one big time payment from TDS. But just talking with Dan and make sure he felt comfortable with this. He basically told me it's probably a good number, so it could be, it could be up another twenty thousand, but seventy, or it could be, you know, end up being forty thousand in the end. So it's one of those things, it's, we're at the plate about a year here now, but he's pretty confident it's going to be closer to fifty thousand.
So are you just saying by that, sorry, that you're just saying by that, if I just heard you correctly, that we were not collecting money that we should have been collecting before, just because there wasn't somebody out there sending over it?
We weren't, uh, enforcing it the way we probably were, so we didn't have somebody could go around and enforce all that, so it is something that we're add in and they're now.
It's more, he's finding people who are doing work without permits.
Doing work without permits is what is happening, so. Change, yeah, we heard that the permits has changed. So.
Kathy? I'm not sure where this question fits into the discussion, but I'm curious as to whose salaries we charge against TIF and what percentage?
For, uh, in total?
Like, like the planners, like yours? Like Brian's?
We do charge some of Brian's and the planners, because they're heavily involved.
And yours, I assume?
Mine's a small amount, because I don't do very much, but, you know, Brian's involved in probably.
So what percentage?
Uh, I don't have, I can have it for the next meeting, I do have a.
I'd like to know what, whose salaries and what percentage we charge against.
Yeah.
And if we are maximizing that.
Yeah, yeah, we only charge them to the one tip right now, um, because the other tips are basically, uh, just paying, they're just paying a principal and interest, so they're not really, they won't allow that. Uh, page eighteen.
Are you done with the revenues then?
Uh, I just got a couple more. School officers, um, I didn't realize until after we started doing the budget that the, uh, school officer was actually getting hot out, and then he's actually now a family insurance, and that increased, increased there. So if you get one, we pay more than one, you know, it's offset here. Interest income is the big one. I've increased that by a hundred and seventy-three thousand. My interest income this year is going to be roughly about four hundred thousand, but the rates, um, I don't know if it's going to be dropping a little bit, we're not, has, we're not going to have as big as balances that we have this year. Um, but it's going to average about twenty-five thousand, uh, projecting for two thousand twenty. Right now, we're, you know, we're a lot higher than that. Now, two thousand twenty, two thousand eighteen, we're at three hundred and seven thousand. I think we'll be closer to that amount, so that's where we're projecting around there. And fund balance, you know, fund balance is kind of one of the last numbers. We did budget six hundred and nineteen of fund balance, now we're down to a hundred ninety-six. Room tax, just want to hit on this quick. Room tax is a transfer, if you look at page eighteen, there's a transfer from tourism, which is the room tax. Was received about two hundred, two thousand. Um, last year we budgeted, I think, two hundred and forty-three, so that's a difference of forty thousand. So that's in a brand-new fund now, and each year it's dropping because it goes back, um, one year for five years, and so I think next year will probably be around a hundred ninety-five thousand, if I remember correctly, one ninety-six, I believe it is, so. And it's going to level off, I believe, at one ninety, I think it's the last year, so.
Why do we receive so much less this year? Is it because we were planning on that Abbott Hotel, or?
Uh, that's how much we're going, I guess, monthly to receive.
Oh, so that's for what's going to the city?
Yeah.
So I'm confused, because we are putting a new, I, 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 I'm confused as to why it's dropping, explain that again?
Uh, for the new state law, we're only allowed to keep so much.
We, we are grandfathered in, in the, the previous state law, so, uh, it's a very long, complicated thing, but basically, you take a five-year window and you kind of drop, you drop till you get to, I think in our case it's, when you get to year twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two, then you level out at, at one hundred and ninety thousand, which is the max amount that we can, from a percentage standpoint, retain in this municipality. Everything in addition to that, including any new room tax revenue, goes into the fund to be expended for tourism-related expenses.
Isn't it based on, like, the year, the amount you got, two thousand and ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember exactly.
Can we use that room tax, though, for things like, um, things that might put heads on beds, like the fireworks, like the festival?
The tourism part of room tax, you mean?
The part, the part, because the city has expected, the fall festival, those things that attract people to the community that we spend, that the city spends money, can it, can it, um, pay for part of the cost of those events like the public works department or the police department?
Not directly, no. Uh, so, separate from the money that we can retain, our thirty percent or whatever it is, that can be spent on general obligation expenses. The money that goes into the tourism fund, that has to be spent by the tourism commission. And so they are the, the legislative entity that makes the decisions on how to spend them. Related to that, there are a set of statutory requirements in terms of what that money can be spent on, and it has to be spent on, as you say, things that, that basically drive heads and beds, or kind of marketing for the community's tourism as a whole, and the.
If we charged the festival committee for the police, could they apply for money?
I don't, I see where you're going with that, and I would not love that, and it, because, because then you're using tourism dollars to basically go around and fund city operations, um, and I don't believe that would meet the statutory requirement.
Okay.
It has to be for tourism promotion, so, you know, the marketing of the fireworks as an example, or the marketing of a parade, something like that, I, I think you'd run into more challenges if you were trying to fund the operations of that specific event.
But you can do it.
Right.
We're still kind of feeling our way through this whole process.
It's, it's more complicated than, well, I shouldn't say than you'd expect, state law, but it's, it's very complicated.
Mark, one of the other things I have there is finance, I'm just going to jump to that, page thirty-two. Really, uh, no change, there were some adjustments for the audit, increased that by two. And then we had to increase the service contracts and all and on, and we went up like, the total went up a thousand dollars, less than, less than a thousand dollars in the finance department. Next is, uh, TIFs. If you want to kind of go to page, page. If you want to kind of go to page, page eight. TIF is, the numbers we have in the TIF, or the TIF increment's kind of a rolling number. It gets adjusted based on if there's any, these right now are just estimates. It gets adjusted based on what our final number for property taxes is, what the final numbers for all the other districts are, too. So this kind of calculates it, so. On here, this TIF increment calculations is how we, TIF, or calculate where a TIF increment is. So it's kind of the bottom of the page, it shows equalized value per district, equalized-
What page is it?
Page, page eight. So it's equalized value per district, so this is the equalized value is what's above what the base value is. So you see TIF 2 is closed, so 2019 would be zero. So four, five, you can see the four, five, six, seven, and eight, nine. Four is Monona Drive. TIF 5, we call Garden Circle, or it's MSP behind Kens. TIF 6 is the UW clinics, Meritor clinics. TIF 7 is Fairway Glen, my golf course. Eight is Trista, and nine is Riverfront. So these are, these are all, these will change throughout the process once they get the final numbers from the county and from the, the school district, and we get our final numbers, too. But they should be pretty close where these are. TIF 4, just want to mention this one. You can see it went from 363,000 to 901,000. That's a pretty big jump. The reason why that is, we did a TIF amendment last year, and it was approved to take out some, some properties because they had a negative value in the district. State forgot to implement those last year, so what they do is they're doubling it up this year. They call it a catch-up rule. So they're catching up this year, and then next year we'll go back to probably about 500,000 or so next year. So it's a one-time thing where it's jumping that high. So that's how these are calculated. So if you kind of go, and so the TIF stuff is on, starts on page 153, and we kind of go through them quick. Basically, ours, TIF increment, it is calculated on that page, TIF 8, and then each one we just have with the interest, and. TIF 4, so again, it's Monona Drive, shows the principal and interest payments. On the next page is TIF 5, MSP, again, shows the principal and interest. That's all we're doing for TIF 6, same thing, principal and interest. Seven, principal and interest. TIF 8, it's principal and interest. TIF 9, there is some cost here for salaries. And there is some cost in there for some legal expenses and mainly principal and interest. There will be something coming to the CDA, just so you're aware of this. TIF 5 will need a donor district. So TIF 6 will eventually come to, TIF 6 is, is doing great. And so we'll use, basically, what we're going to propose is using TIF 6 to help pay off TIF 5. TIF 5, I don't know if people know what TIF 5 was. At one time, it was Garden Circle, had these, they see apartment complex that was rundown, a lot of social issues, a lot of crime there. City bought it, basically did the same thing with the Riverfront, but it took a little while to get going on that, to get our increment. So that one's always been a problem, that we've always known that was really never going to fund itself because of those issues. So TIF 6 will eventually be the donor district to help pay off the TIF 5 debt.
Which is TIF 6 to get?
That's Meritor and UW, clerks.
Jennifer?
Do you have any concern that Meritor and UW are going to merge? Like, their operations, based on the fact that they're now under the same?
I haven't heard that. I don't know if, I guess I don't know.
I haven't heard anything about that. I don't know. It's a good question.
Yeah, that's my brother.
Even if they did, I mean, the building is still an asset, so it would still be paying vacant taxes.
And they have also, if it wouldn't vacant and it was lower, they have a required amount to pay.
That's right.
So they, the reason why TIF 6 is doing so well, it's not because of, because there's really, we didn't put much for infrastructure in there. I think we put a stoplight in, we did that, it's only infrastructure, we paid them, so the loan purchase agreements, which is actually fairly low when you compare it. So they are basically, their assessments are basically right where they're supposed to be. They're not too high, and we don't think they're barely above what they're required, so which is what they thought they would be, so. Doing, they're doing well. TIF, the best one so far is Trista. That's going to be one, that's going to be, that TIF. Trista, if you can see, just look at the page 157, I think it's a new name now, new building.
You hire a terrace.
That technically we paid off in six or seven years if we really wanted it to, but that could be helping with TIF 9 out eventually in the end, but, you know, we're, one year is 480, another bump up to 634, because their assessments are going up. So that TIF is probably going to be, not going to reach what, you know, TIF 2 is, but it's also going to be a very successful TIF, so. That's one of those, we didn't have to buy the properties and tear it down, so there's, that's a positive. The last one is, is the debt service.
So the investment.
Yeah. Debt service, page 151. This is where we're talking about the larger increase. As you can see, as we talked about in the presentation, the actual expenditures are less than they were last year, but you can see, I didn't have any here today estimates, but the transfer from general fund was 200,000, the fund balance applied was 500,000. We didn't, we basically are out of fund balance into TIF service, TIF's debt service, we always say TIF, debt service fund. There's no more, there are fund balance there, but we transferred the 200,000 from the general fund, too. We didn't do it yet because I, we don't know what's going on with the capital projects yet, how much that's going to take up in that fund balance. So like, I think Mary said, that's something at the end we want to look at, the use on fund balance, this is what I would recommend putting it here to offset that debt service. But expenditures are going to be leveling off. You know, there's going to be a swing a little bit here and there, 100,000 or up or down a little bit for the future years, until we get the public safety building, and it's going to go up, you know, more. But, so that's, you know, something to think about is, you know, you know, wait to see what happens with the capital projects, capital budget, and see how much we use on the actual fund balance, and see if there's something we want to look at to apply to the fund balance here, so. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Kathy?
Where are we in comparison to our COE?
Our debt limit?
Yep.
Is that borrowing number? I can remember offhand, I'll take a look at it. It's actually a lot better than it's been in the past. I'll take a look at it. I know it's, it's rare. Do you remember what was in the hesitation? It's over 15, I think, percent, 15 to 20. It used to be almost 10, so.
Can we have a collective room?
For, I mean, that's for, yeah, the borrowing, yeah, capacity, but, you know, we're also looking at the public safety building, so I think that's why we're trying to get that gap in there. That's the big reason.
If you could have that number, my-
Yeah, I can get that. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's in there. You know, we talked about that. I just don't remember offhand.
Right.
They all run together after a while.
Any other questions? Anything else anybody needs to ask about related to any of this? Okay, our next meeting will be next Wednesday at 5:30, and that'll be in the Room Library, right? So is there a motion to adjourn?
For adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.